All right, we're about thirty seconds away. You guys feel set? Clerk Regula, you all set?
Sweetie.
Sounds good. With that, we will call to order the regular Petersburg Borough Assembly Meeting for Tuesday, July sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Clerk, please call the roll.
Jay.
Here.
Taylor.
Absent.
Chelsea.
Here.
Mark.
Here, Jensen is excused.
Jeff.
Here.
Bob.
Here.
David.
Here.
Excellent. For those listening at home, we have five of us live here in chambers. Brings us to the voluntary pledge of allegiance. Please rise for pledge. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of August third, twenty twenty, August seventeenth, twenty twenty, August thirty-one, twenty twenty, which was a special meeting, September eighth, twenty twenty, regular, September twenty-one, two thousand and twenty, regular assembly meeting, and last but not least, June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, regular assembly meeting minutes.
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made by member Muti and seconded by member Kensonner. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes get passed unanimously, which brings us to item number four, amendment and approval of today's meeting agenda. There any amendments? Please make them. Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as is.
I move.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve today's meeting agenda by member Muti and seconded by member Kensonner. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The approval, the agenda has been approved as is unanimously. There are no public hearings today, and there are no bid awards. Which brings us to item number seven, persons to be heard related to today's agenda. And as Clerk Regula mentioned before, we will start with those here in the audience. If you'd like to testify to something or speak to something related to today's agenda, please step forward. You've got five minutes. Please be civil and respectful in your statements. Whoever would like to go first, go right ahead. Just please state your name and who you represent. Clerk Regula, you guys keeping time? Thank you kindly. Go ahead.
My name's John Fortna. I am here to read a statement to you to put into the record today. Good afternoon. I'm here today representing my family, the Fortnas, and Dave and Marlene Cushing for the sale of property three oh six Sandy Beach Road. We are the adjoining property owners to the property being sold at three oh six Sandy Beach Road. I am here to ask you, Assembly members, if you would consider, consider selling the property as a sealed bid compared to an auction. The last auction that you guys had at seven oh five, Iro two was sold as a sealed bid. The reason I feel like this is Petersburg is a small community, and we all know one another, friends or family. We really shouldn't be fighting with our neighbors or other property owners. So I'm just looking here to put, to see if you guys would consider putting, being a sealed bid compared to a public auction. And we just don't want the play games or for someone to try to drive the price up. We just want a fair opportunity to be able to bid on the property and try to win it. I'd like to thank you guys for the consideration, and if you have any other questions, I'll be here throughout the whole meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Really, we open testify to items related today? Proceed, sir. Floor is yours.
Air, Assembly. My name is Eric Lee. I'm representing myself. I'm here to encourage the Assembly to request more information from Senator Murkowski's office regarding Senate Bill thirty-two thirty-one, the Natives Without Land Bill. From the start years ago, this bill has been poorly researched and the public has been inadequately informed. As a result, at this late date, Murkowski's office is looking for support from our Assembly without having provided information that is essential for the Assembly to determine what is being asked, it is being asked to support. The response to question number twenty-nine of the questions submitted by the Assembly some months ago is an example of how inadequate information provided to the public and Assembly has been. The question reads, will ANXHA have to be modified to make this lands and infrastructure transfer possible? The first sentence of the response is, ANXHA will be amended to establish the new urban corporations for Alaska. There's no mention of what the language of the amendment would actually be, or any mention of what part of ANXHA would be amended. And perhaps most importantly, no mention of the precedent such an amendment could set for the rest of Alaska. This is absolutely essential information the Assembly needs just to gain an understanding of what you, the Assembly, are being asked to support. Yet no information has been provided. There are over eighty villages in Alaska that did not meet the eligibility criteria for corporation status under ANXHA. I think it's maybe considerably more, I'm not sure. If this bill changes the eligibility criteria for those communities, you, the Assembly, need to know that. The people of Petersburg need to know that, and all the state legislators need to know that. So their constituents in those communities can be heard. If this bill and the ANXHA amendment do not set any precedent for the rest of Alaska, we need to know that as well. So I urge the Assembly to submit a request for information on this topic to Senator Murkowski's office with a request for a prompt reply. Surely, we must have more information on this as well as other aspects of the bill if she is asking for our support. Emotions run deep regarding this topic of how to right the wrongs of the past. It would be so easy to simply say, just give the indigenous people their lands back and support any bill that transfers those, any lands back to the indigenous peoples. You know, it would be great at times like this to live in a fantasy world where a queen could simply raise her magic wand and right all the wrongs of the past and make things everything okay. But we don't. We live in a democracy. Transfers of land from the public to private ownership require that legislation be written. The democratic process requires an informed public and informed public officials to represent them. In this democracy, we need to recognize that all the ethnic groups around us, while different, are part of the greater society we all share. We all have equal rights under the law. We all share the same responsibility to protect the forest lands and salmon streams that we all depend on. Clear language protecting the land should be written into a bill such as this. There should be equity between all native shareholders that would receive land, as well as equity between shareholders that would receive land under this bill and shareholders who received land under ANXHA. This bill, as written now, falls short in these ways. We need to do better. We must do better for the sake of all Alaskans who would have to live with the consequences for generations to come of whatever bill were to pass. Something we can do now as a step in that direction is to ask Senator Murkowski for more information regarding the precedent-setting potential of this bill. So I encourage the Assembly to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Seeing no other folks unless Phil was waiting to talk, but I think he's got his own thing later. It's all queued over to Clerk Regula for anybody online who would like to testify.
Yes, we have Cynthia Wallys online.
Okay, sounds good.
Good afternoon, Assembly. Can you hear me?
Clear today, Cynthia.
Oh, great. Thank you so much. I would like to just take a moment to talk about your item fourteen B, which is UFA membership. And I understand that you talked about this at an earlier assembly meeting, and I apologize, I wasn't there for that to answer any questions. I understand that some of the conversation revolved around supporting an organization that endorses political candidates. And as you know, UFA does indeed do that. So so I guess I'm a little curious as to what organizations, what other organizations the borough might support that endorses political candidates. And also, if you come to the conclusion that you would like to support UFA in another way, I was talking with our executive director with whom you've received the invitation letter, and she suggested maybe supporting us in one of our fall meetings by offering food or a discount on a venue or just some, in some way. So with that, I think I'll step back and I'll just be available for questions if you have any when it comes to this item fourteen B. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cynthia. And that is all in the queue, which will bring us to item eight, persons to be heard unrelated to today's agenda. Any of the members of the audience here wanting to speak to anything unrelated to today's? Well, how about in the queue, Clerk Regula?
No, there's no one.
Okay. There are no board commission or committee reports, no consent agenda. But we do have a report of other officers. PMC CEO Hofstadter is going to provide us with the report. Floor is yours, Phil.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Phil Hofstadter, Peter from Medical Center CEO. Want to provide you with just a few updates. Operationally, we continue to downgrade our COVID mitigation response. So we're continuing to work forward on providing those services locally within the hospital as opposed to out at the airport or in different locations within the hospital. So we're incorporating that within our routine care with vaccines, asymptomatic testing, and also symptomatic testing. So we continue those, but also we're downgrading those, those areas as well. So that's exciting. We advocate strongly with vaccines and making sure that people have an opportunity to get those. We're making those as available as possible. And then secondly, I want to thank the Assembly on the past couple of months. I feel like we've had a lot of productive conversation at the, at the borough and hospital sessions. We had a work session in May, and again, we started up on a conversation with the facility and a replacement facility, and then we continued on with the resolution. And I want to thank the Assembly for that support. I know it certainly sparked up some conversation in the community, and I want to emphasize that's not a bad thing. That's actually a very good thing. It's good, because when I first came here, the fact that a replacement facility at all was necessary was in question. And so I'm encouraged to, to hear that that's no longer a question, that now it's, there are other questions to be answered. And I do encourage community members to seek out those answers. I want to make sure that people are informed as possible. I am always available. Part of my job is to talk to the community members, whether that's one-on-one or whether that's with a group. I, in addition to attending the assembly meetings, I also attend as much as possible PIA meetings. I attended last week's meeting. I also have board meetings. I encourage community to come to our board meetings, which are advertised as well, and those are held monthly. There's a lot of information there. I am available one-on-one with community members. My number is and my email are listed on the PMC website. And we also, at the same time, we have our community needs assessment that we have to do, which is every three years, and it happens to be the timing is pretty good right now, coming out of COVID and also with these conversations. And that's also listed on our website, and that website is pmca.k.org. And I encourage everyone possible to reach out to me, reach out to my staff. We can provide many of the answers. And honestly, we, we ask questions as well. For example, you know, partnerships is the, is the one that's, that's coming up. Search partnership is certainly one that's been out there. And, you know, I'm a big supporter of collaborative partnerships. I feel very strongly that we need to define those partnerships and not just, you know, stand for complete takeover, for example. That is not acceptable. We need to define our healthcare services in the community, and we need to define those partnerships and what those roles are. There's a lot of opportunity out there, and I feel like if we are not standing together, we're not unified, we will not have a hope on bringing a new facility together. We do not need another example for division in the community. I encourage everyone to really reach out and get informed as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. And I'll, member Muti, you read my mind. I was gonna say, are there any questions for Phil or comments? Floor is yours, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming, Phil. Appreciate it. Just a couple of questions, and maybe it's a little early, but where are we on the site selection process?
Okay, so good. That is a very good question. I think that the next steps, there are a couple of next steps I would love to see, other than conversation. I think site selection is certainly paramount. I would encourage, I'd like to invite the Assembly to have a discussion on, on that site selection. I also would like to invite the departments involved with the Assembly as well. I think they can best answer the questions of sewer and water and electrical infrastructure. And I think there's some, some great conversation we could have on that, because I think that is exactly where we need to go. We need to figure out a site selection. And I look forward to that conversation. I could certainly, you know, probably put that in the Assembly and work on what that would look like as a work session or not.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So are you, I just want to understand, so are you looking for the Assembly to have another work session with the hospital to look at available sites that meet the criteria that the hospital board is looking for for a facility?
I guess I would open up the conversation to what the Assembly would like to see as next steps for that. If that's a work session, then I'm happy to organize that.
Okay, thank you.
The follow-up to that is, where, where is the hospital board on that same topic right now? Where does, where, where does the hospital board stand on sites, on the next steps?
I think we, we're standing together in that aspect. I think that the site selection, the borough had provided the, the five sites. We basically trimmed that down to three with the master planning. And really, it's, I think the, the conversation at the work session when we discussed that was more about economics and, you know, how much muskeg and infrastructure, sewer water, those kinds of questions to lean towards a location as opposed to a preference, for example.
How do, thank you. Member Lynn.
Phil, do you think we have enough information now with the preliminary work we've done to have a, to talk about the details? Or are we still kind of level up? I'm talking, I'm going back to, to member Muti's question about work session, or would it be better to have a, put it on as a discussion item that we could do it something here as, I'm, I'm fussing this in my own mind.
Yeah, I, I can answer. One of the things I'd like to have before we move that forward is the environmental study, which we are working on. And that's, PMC is sponsoring that. And that is something that we would like to see the completion on, on, to answer some of those questions related to, you know, yeah, go ahead. Sorry. I see, I see some questions. But the environmental study is what I'd like to see before we kind of move forward on that discussion.
That seems prudent. Member Muti, were you gonna, actually, member Kensonner hadn't gone yet. Go ahead.
So when you say environmental study, that's when you have an engineer come in and see how deep the muskeg is?
Correct. Okay, that's correct. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of course. So I just want to understand this. So while we're getting ready, if we are going to have a future work session with the hospital board and the borough assembly, would now be the process for the borough to look at the three sites that we have and come up with what is available on three sites so that we could, you know, start to narrow down or start working on how we're going to make a decision as to what site is best? I mean, we could be doing that now if we were to give direction to the borough staff to head that way. But I'm just trying to sort it out so it doesn't get lost in the weeds here.
I guess I'm looking for direction on that as well.
If I'm, if I'm hearing you right, Phil, right now, some of those site selection things may be based on the environmental analysis. And if I'm also hearing you right, it would be prudent to wait for the results of that before proceeding much further down that road.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's basically three sites, and, and it'd probably be prudent to have the environmental study and then, and then move forward. You know, as, as much as the conversation is out there, I, and I know we have an aging facility, I don't, you know, I think we have to be methodical, organized, and thorough in our processes and not just as urgent. And, you know, I think that I can speak for the board in saying that we're okay with waiting for those studies and then keeping the conversation moving forward.
Manager Geeseback, you were waiting for something?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Phil, the PMC has been amazing through COVID, helping the processors here in town as well as the borough itself. And, I mean, folks, I think many people are aware how much you've done. But as we've, as we're scaling back COVID, are we still able to offer some free vaccines and testing for the processors? I think that's, the answer is yes, but I wanted to know.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yes, thank you. Absolutely. Yes, we want to continue moving those forward and free to the community. Certainly.
I have a meeting with them tomorrow, so I wanted to make sure I had the most up-to-date information.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions, member Lynn?
Yeah. Later on the agenda, Phil, we're talking about continuing traveler testing with PMC. How do you, how do you feel that's gonna, or how will you handle that through, if we approve that contract with PMC?
Yeah, there's set hours that are onsite, and so there's a contact number that would be, that we called, and we will use our, incorporate our own staff to come out and provide, provide the testing. If we need to scale up, we'll scale up. Right now, the number of tests that are being, you know, before we downgraded, when it was onsite was four or five a day at the most. It was really scaling back. It didn't seem like it was prudent to have staff up there in person. So having it scheduled in a facility, we can certainly absorb that. I mean, it's not, it's not super easy to transition everything. There's a lot of moving parts involved, but having it in the facility is something we'll make available. If there is an outbreak or the Delta variant comes in, and certainly scale, we will scale up as needed.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Phil.
Thank you.
Keep us posted. Oh, Chelsea, did you hand up?
Just a, no, it's fine. I snuck in. We were emailed the medical center budget, the Assembly and manager. And so thank you for that. I appreciate that. And I just was wondering if that was available for the public, or is that something people?
Yeah, it should be. It's part of our board minutes and it's public record. We, we do report out on all that. Yes.
Okay, I just think that kind of accountability to the public is important to highlight, and so I just wanted to do that real quick. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Point member Tremblay. Keep us posted, Phil. Look forward to moving forward with you on it.
Thank you.
You bet. With that, we still have a brief mayor's report for the day. I just wanted to publicly thank all of the borough employees for their service. Any of the great things we enjoy here in town are due to them and their efforts, and I wanted to make sure it was said out loud because it is much appreciated. Secondly, we are seeking letters of interest for, from borough residents who wish to serve the community by filling a vacant seat on the following boards, commissions until October twenty-one municipal election. Excuse me. The planning commission is one vacant seat, and the public safety advisory board has two vacancies. Letters of interest should be submitted to Clerk Thompson at Borough Office located at twelve South Nordic Drive by mailing to box three two nine Petersburg AK nine nine eight three three, or by emailing to D Thompson, Petersburg AK dot gov. And it does not appear we've got, or Steve does not have a written manager's report, but Steve, is there anything you wanted to highlight today or touch on?
I'm just getting back up to speed, but I can, I can try to answer any questions. I have no report.
Any general questions for the manager today? Member Muti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet.
Um, it doesn't have to happen today, but, and I know I sent an email last week, but can, at the next meeting or something, can somebody provide a timeline for what's next for the house out the road that doesn't have, has not hooked up to sewer yet? Seems like there's, nothing is done since we were there. We visited the issue several months ago, and there seems to be more people living in the house, and if raw sewage is being dumped down the hill, you know, that's, to me, that's, that's kind of a big deal. And it might be a month or two for where we're going, but I know one of the options are turning off the water to the facility. So, but that's, to me, it's not acceptable to have raw sewage going down the hill. The neighbors are complaining about it, and I don't know, if I lived next door to it, I'd be a little bit upset. So if we could maybe get something for the next meeting, that'd be great. Thank you.
I'm good.
All right.
Anything else for the manager today? Right on. Welcome back, Steve.
Thank you.
You bet. Brings us to unfinished business. Item A, Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eleven, and ordinance amending chapter four point three zero, Alaska Remote Seller Sales Tax Code of the Borough Code, third and final reading. For those listening at home, this was, been approved unanimously in both of its readings. So I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Moved by member Muti and seconded by member Kensonner. Discussion. Clerk, call the roll.
Bob.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Jay.
Yes.
Chelsea.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Passes unanimously, and it's third and final reading. Brings us to item B, UFA membership. This item was postponed for discussion on July, at the July seventh meeting. Since it's an action item, I would entertain a motion to either discuss UFA membership or to move to join UFA. If member Muti was originally your thing, I'll follow your guys' lead and whatever, how you want to frame this as a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I don't know how, do we need a motion for this first, or?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we join UFA as a member.
One second.
A motion been made to join UFA as a member by member Muti and seconded by member Tremblay. Discussion, member Muti.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Yeah, I, I made the motion. I don't support the motion, but I wanted to talk about it. You know, I think there's no way we can get around supporting this organization who actively campaigns for people they support in the political arena. But I, I, I see a way to support UFA, like Cynthia said, supporting them in one of their fall meetings or some other way than just joining as a membership. So I think it's been a good discussion. It's a good way to sort this stuff out, and I'm not even voting against this, but yeah, that's where I'm headed. Thank you.
Thank you, member Tremblay.
Um, thank you. Yeah, I think it'd be interesting to explore what options there are and to answer the caller's question, Cynthia's question. As discussed at the last meeting, the borough assembly is not a part of other groups that do official endorsements. We are a part of things like Alaska Municipal League that does lobbying on issues, and as a government, we are associated with government figures that are parts of parties. But I looked them up on their, on the UFA website, and there are some communities that are officially members. They're just listed on their website, but given that it would be kind of precedent-setting for us, I think that I'll be sticking with my opinion about not officially joining, but I am open to creative ways to show support, and I encourage people to, many local businesses are supporters, many local individuals are supporters. So, you know, civic participation in public process is the beautiful part of this country, so that we just celebrated this weekend. So I'd encourage people to support groups that they enjoy, but I don't think it's necessarily appropriate for the borough assembly to be joining, so.
Remember Tremblay? Anyone, any further discussion? I'll briefly chime in just to echo the comments of member Muti and member Tremblay. I'll be voting no, but I'll most certainly be supportive of, of the Assembly and the, and the borough, supporting UFA in other, other ways possible. Anything further? Clerk, please call the roll.
Jeff.
No.
David.
No.
Jay.
No.
Chelsea.
No.
Bob.
No.
Right. That fails on a zero to five basis. Bringing us to new business. Bringing us to new business, item A, resolution twenty twenty one dash oh nine. A resolution authorizing the public sales parcel number oh one dash zero zero three dash five two one located at three oh six Sandy Beach Road by public auction. I entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second. Motion been made by member Muti and seconded by member Lynn. And before we proceed much further, I wanted to just briefly touch on the uh, Mr. Fortner, who spoke earlier about doing this by sealed bid. If um, that is the will of the assembly, it would need to be done by amendment and at any, if I'm, that is correct, clerk Regula. And uh, so if any point, uh, an assembly member is inclined to make an amendment to go that direction, I would be willing to entertain it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment that this uh, this auction be conducted by sealed bid.
I'll second that.
That moves you. Got that, clerk Regula?
Yep.
The motion, uh, the amendment was made by member Kenson and uh, seconded by member Muti. Uh, discussion on the amendment. Member Muti?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I guess this is to the clerk. Um, so what, why do we differentiate between sealed and public auction, why not just do it sealed all the way or sealed on both ways? Or is that just up to the borough's discretion? Thank you.
For the mayor.
Yeah.
Um, traditionally, we do public outcry auctions. Um, during COVID, we moved to sealed bid process to try to keep the, go stay away from groups. Um, it's more tradition, um, there's no um, set rule one way or the other. So it's, it is up to the assembly.
Thank you.
Member Lynn?
Follow up to that question, is there any advantages or disadvantages one way or the other?
Um, okay, y- y- yes, it depends on whose point of view you're you're speaking to. So from the borough's perspective, um, outcry auctions tend to have higher prices. So the borough sells the property for a higher price, usually in an outcry auction as compared to a sealed bid. The other advantage i- is, you know, it depends on how the people bidding view it. But in an outcry auction, you have the op- option to see where you are. And if you want it bad enough to raise your bid to, um, so it's not a done deal. Sealed bid is, you know, usually lower price from the auction. And it, um, as Mr. Fortner said, you know, a little bit less uh opportunity to just kind of bid it up purposely, because we have, we have seen that, that's happened before. Um, so, that's kind of the, I mean, it is, we haven't done a lot of these in, in what, ten years? We've half a dozen, maybe? Um, so it's not, doesn't come up very often.
Yes, to briefly comment on that, uh, Mr. Manager, since I've been on the assembly, I've been a part of a couple of both. One, I think of a sealed bid process, we actually did as a borough trying to buy some lots out of Pappy's and uh and the flip side is a waterfront Sandy Beach lot that we did by outcry auction and drove the price up, so. I think, even in the sealed bid process, those properties weren't as desirable as the Sandy Beach one, I think, you know, some of that reflects as well. And I think for the Upland Lot there on Sandy Beach, it's a I'm very comfortable with the amendment in this, given this context, uh, to do it by sealed bid. Um, it, it's not too, it's not a flat out acre on the, on the sound, so it's a straight presidential lot. Anyway, I'll be voting for the amendment, for the discussion on the amendment. Member Lynn, sorry, I missed you over there.
If, if we uh, if you vote, if we vote yes for this one, then the next ones here that we have for the other lots, uh, would, would the preference end to be uh sealed bid on those also?
From the borough's perspective, it's easier to do one sale process and get them both sold, so, and doing the same method. So yes, I I would suggest that you do them both the same way and be consistent. Over time, I think that's, um, in my opinion, that's maybe fair to the community to be kind of consistent on how we do these. Um, so they know what to expect. That's.
Absolutely. Yes, uh, Mr. Manager, um, how's it done everywhere else? Like here in Southeast, or is it any, or do you have any knowledge?
I I don't know for sure, but I, my, my belief is it's all over the board. I mean, you know, the the challenge is it sets precedent. So if we sell this, in the past, we've done these on outcry auction. If we move to sealed bid for, now that we're through COVID, in a sense, we we're setting a preference. So we're, or precedent, excuse me, where folks could, you know, will likely want to come in and say, well, I want this to be sealed bid or I want this to be outcry auction. Not a big deal, I mean, the assembly can weigh in, um, but you put yourselves in that position if you go that way. How other people do it, I think is, again, all over the board. It just depends on the the community and um, the property sometimes, you know.
Except, just as a clarifier with that, we have done sealed bid ones, uh, aside from COVID too, like wasn't there one on First Street we did? That Covisto property near the Public Works?
So that was not sealed bid, that was a direct sale. So the assembly in that instance decided not to put it out to public auction, but to sell directly to the person who had applied to purchase it because they'd already been using it, they had structures on it, and blah, blah, blah. So that's the, that's a third option is direct sale.
My point being is there, we've, we have a scattershot precedent at best right now, and so I'm not concerned about that. Member Lynn, go right ahead.
Do we at some point in the future then need to set some kind of a set of criteria how we would do this? I'm, I'm asking the question, would it be better, what?
Yeah, you know, it's a, it's a tough question, because number one, we don't do a lot of these. And I don't see that changing, I mean, even if we got all the land that the state owes us from forming a borough, this, by the time you get them surveyed and stuff, this is not something that's gonna happen all that frequently. So just everybody understand that. Um, and what's the precedent setting is, you know, if each time this comes up, the assembly wants to weigh in and say, you know, somebody has expressed an interest to do this as a sealed bid, so that's what we're gonna do. And there's nothing wrong with that. Um, you know, just be aware if you differ. So if you got, you know, one person comes in and says, I want this as outcry auction, the other person says, I want it as a sealed bid. Now, now the assembly's in the position of making a decision. I, what I'm hearing from Assembly Lynn is suggesting that we come up with some rules around that. I'm not sure, how how do you put rules around something that there's not, there's not really a, um, I can't think of a reason to do one versus the other other than what I've already said. Sorry.
Thank you, thank you, no, I, you, you've answered the question.
Further discussion on um, the sale of this property uh as amended to sealed bid?
To vote on the amendment?
No, you haven't voted on the amendment.
Correct, uh, so further discussion on the amendment. Thank you, member Tremblay. Uh, clerk, please call the roll on the amendment.
Jay?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Excellent, the amendment passes unanimously, now back to the main motion as amended, any further discussion there? All right, uh, clerk, please call the roll on the resolution as amended.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
As amended by sealed bid. Here we go, on to resol- uh, item B, resolution twenty twenty one dash one zero. A resolution authorizing the public sale parcels number zero three dash two one zero dash three one zero and zero three dash two one three dash zero four zero on Cooperoff Island by public auction. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made by member Muti and seconded by member Lynn, discussion for amendment, member Muti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend this motion to take out the word public auction and put in sealed bid.
There's a second to the amendment.
Second.
Seconded by member Lynn, discussion on the amendment. Member Muti.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I just threw this out there since we were just talking about being consistent. You know, I think maybe for me, I'd be, you know, I'd like to see it go, I'd like to, like to have the borough be consistent. But, you know, I think overall that this thing needs to be, I don't know if I'm right or wrong here, but maybe the planning and zoning should kind of weigh in a little bit on this to kind of tell us what they think works best for them. And I, you know, um, I know they have lots to do, but uh, yeah, that's, I figured since we did sealed bid on the earlier resolution, I was just trying to be consistent, thank you.
Further discussions on the amendment? Yeah, I'll just briefly chime in on it, um. Maybe I'm just a little naive sometimes, but I'm not particularly worried about setting precedent either way. I think these things are generally a case by case, or they can be. Um, I think that statement's also based on the naivety that we're all gonna be diligent and deliberate and thoughtful in our efforts and trying to be prudent, but I, I feel like we are on this one, I'll have no problem voting for it today. Any further discussion on the amendment? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bob?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Right, the amendments, you have both those prop- Okay, to have those properties um, sailed by sealed bid, um, passes, so back to the main motion as amended, further discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Jeff? Jay?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
All right, that resolution as amended passes unanimously. Bringing us to item C, traveler testing contract amendment number four. I'll read this out just to keep it simple. I would entertain a motion to approve amendment number four of the State of Alaska Contract C zero six two zero dash five two three to extend traveler testing services at the Petersburg Medical Center to September thirtieth two thousand and twenty one for total payment to the borough of one million two hundred and seventy six thousand four hundred and twenty five dollars and to amend the memorandum of agreement Petersburg Medical Center to reflect the extension and setting a not to exceed value of the memorandum of agreement at, agreement at one million one hundred and one thousand six hundred.
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made by member Lynn and seconded by member Tremblay, discussion. Seeing none, well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Bob? David?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes. All right, that passes unanimously. Brings us down to communications, communications received since June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty one are available on the borough website for anyone who would like some reading. Assembly discussion items, uh, there are no discussion items listed today, but assembly member comments, member Muti, see your hand over there.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as we just talked about the correspondence received, I would encourage the public to look at the letter that we got from the hospital board on June twenty fourth. It does a really good job of laying out the roles and responsibility and the relationship between the hospital board and the borough assembly. I know we kind of got wound up at the last meeting or somebody got wound up at the last meeting. And I, I think this letter really spells out, it helped me and I'm sure it'll help out members of the community who read this letter, it came from uh, the hospital board chair Jared Cook, and it's a really good letter and it has some very factual stuff in it and it's very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, that is uh, you're spot on, member Muti, though, as a, I wanted to thank the hospital board for that very thoughtful and deliberate letter. I concur, I think that is, I would call that must reading for members of the community right now. So I highly encourage you to take up member Muti's offer and go read that one. Now, further assembly member comments, member Tremblay.
I just wanted to make a note that right now my plan is to be in Fairbanks for the Conference of Young Alaskans organized by Alaska Municipal League. That's the first week of August, the first through the fourth, so there is a chance I might be missing that meeting. I could, I'm, we're tight on quorum this summer, so I just wanted to put that out into the universe in case um, we needed to plan accordingly, and I can duck away if I need to.
Thank you, duly noted. Further comments by the assembly today? Recognitions from assembly members yourself, member Kenson.
Yes, I'd like to thank uh Parks and Rec and the Chamber of Commerce for doing an excellent job on the Fourth of July celebration this last weekend.
Absolutely. Member Muti?
Yeah, following uh, member Kenson's lead there, and I I wanted to make sure I publicly thank Mindy and Nathan Lopez. Um, they worked really hard over the weekend and um, it's nice when people help out. It's not just a borough celebration, it's uh, borough uh employee celebration, it's just a community celebration. Mindy and Nathan Lopez worked really hard for us, and I just wanted to say thank you very much.
Number Tremblay?
I have two, first, today is the deadline for the Forest Service Alaska Region Outdoor Project Comet Period. And felt important to note, uh, one of the projects on their list include a Snake Ridge um route to Crystal Mountain Improvement. And so that's USFS dot maps dot A R C G I S dot com. I think the radio's been doing that announcement as well, but more the merrier, and today is the day, so I know it's sunny, but get to a computer and just do it really quick. And then the second one is I want to thank Carrie Martins, and she's bringing composting to Petersburg with Tongas Botanicals. Her number is five one eight one four nine zero or tongasbotanicals dot com. And diverting organic matter from the waste stream and building soil on Mitcoff Island is pretty darn great. So thank you to Carrie for her work in getting this started and and this is a part of my to do list today is to sign up, so hopefully more of us get on it and I'm excited to see what comes out of it, so thank you, Carrie.
Tremblay, further recognitions today? With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Post, meeting adjourned, good work, everybody.